Hey, everybody. Let's get started. It's six o'clock. I'd like to call to order the regular council session on October 8th at 6:00 PM. Mayor Stock has asked me to chair the meeting today as she's attending via Zoom along with Councillors Kozloski and Spegman. Just a note to the folks listening online, RTI Internet Service has been down. So we are running on a backup Starlink account, but everything appears to be working correctly. If anybody's having any issues with YouTube, we weren't able to test that. So you may have to go back and look at the session recorded later. And thanks to everybody that's here in person, everybody that's online, and to those who may be viewing this as a recorded session later. So our first call to order is audience participation. This is to allow public comments on items that are not part of tonight's agenda. There will be time to comment on the agenda items as we move through the meeting. Any comments that are coming through as audience participation are limited to three minutes. This is a time for council to listen to those comments. But generally, we do not discuss or respond to the comments given tonight. Any responses to comments would be considered in a future council meeting. So Nancy, did anyone sign up to speak?
Yes. First one is Jenna Barnett. So come up and have a seat.
I forgot one thing. Where to go?
Just a moment.
This area. There you go.
Hello. My name is Jenna Barnett, and I have been part of the Classic Ridge Cluster EBCNB since I moved to Cherry Street in 2021. Currently, I'm serving as co-chair of the Classic Ridge Cluster of EBCNB, and I'm speaking on behalf of our cluster. We request permission to place a small movable storage shed for our neighborhood preparedness emergency supplies on public land. We're asking to put a structure that is not permanent on the right-of-way easement that connects Greenridge Street and Elm Street. It wouldn't need to be permanent. We can purchase something like a tough shed that could be moved if necessary. And certainly, the configuration would not in any way impair pedestrian traffic on this trail. Classic Ridge Cluster has many emergency preparedness supplies that were both donated by EBCNB and also purchased through fundraising. These supplies are labeled, highly organized, and currently in a garage that needs to be vacated. We urgently need storage space for our emergency supplies. The cluster is willing to obtain the structure and set it up, no cost to the city. We just need a place to put it. I understand that the city manager, Public Works, and the city emergency manager are working on a plan. I've been hearing this for where to put these structures. I've been hearing this for a couple of years that they're working on a plan. But our need is acute. We require a place to put our many thousands of dollars' worth of supplies, medical supplies. I anticipate if there's a disaster, we might even be trading some of our extra medical supplies with other clusters because we are very well-stocked. We did a lot of fundraising. So Classic Ridge Cluster has a vision that if there is a disaster, our emergency stockpile will be adequate to meet the needs of our neighbors. It'll be organized for effortless retrieval and be very accessible. But our need is now. And so we are requesting permission to put our emergency depot on the right-of-way easement that connects Elm Street and Greenridge. Thank you for your consideration of this matter.
Thank you for your comments, Jenna, and thank you for your involvement with EBCNB and emergency preparedness.
I just thought of one thing. Can you give us I heard you can do it tonight, but maybe in writing or something, some kind of a timeframe when you'll respond so that we can plan accordingly? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Castor?
I live here in Manzanita. Tonight, I'm talking on behalf of the Tillamook Housing Commission. I had been at the council meeting in August and talked a bit about the housing commission, what's going on. And I want to give an update of what's happening this fall that might be relevant to Manzanita and North County. Each year, the housing commission has about $400,000 in money to give as grants for affordable workforce housing. Our grant cycle is going to start next week. So if there are developers, homeowners out there in this room who have a, an idea to build affordable workforce housing, and they want a little money, by all means, contact us. There's a vetting process, and we're happy to help. So that's October. The, this year, another source of funding we have is the moderate does it moderate? Sorry. My glasses aren't working. It's moderate income revolving loan or Murrell. This is state, state money and is it's aimed more at new housing for residential and maybe conversion from some other use to residential. And there again, the application process is somewhat involved, but our housing coordinator, Parker Salmons, is available to help people learn what your projects fit into that money and how to guide you through it. And finally, a new one this year is the EPA funding that had been granted a couple of years ago to Oregon. And then Tillamook County has come through, and the housing commission through Parker Salmons again is coordinating the, with the DEQ to get this money to developers in as expeditious a manner as they can. These are loans, and the general idea is to produce energy-efficient housing. And so if you have some projects that are specific to energy efficiency, there's money being available through the county, through the state and the feds to help you with your project. And these are going online, as it were, this fall. And I guess that's about it. Oh, and the Murrell, the moderate income revolving loan is, has one of the aspects of it, is that three, is that it has to be a project that can't get done without some extra funding. And that's where Murrell comes in. Thank you.
Question mark. All three of these sources you mentioned, the grants, the Murrell, the EPA, those are available for individuals, businesses, or developers to apply?
Anyone, so long as you fulfill the requirements, like our housing fund, you have to be doing at least three units or more.
To meet the qualification.
Yes, and the state and federal ones are, I've read through, are rather complicated. So it kind of, they cover a variety of possibilities. And what your, the income level you are aiming at for the residences impacts, again.
If you could just remind everybody, I know you mentioned Parker. Is that who anyone that's interested should contact?
Yes, Parker Salmons is the housing coordinator for Tillamook County in the Community Development Office. He is available, the website, both for Tillamook County, the Tillamook Housing Commission has him there. And by phone, email, text, he's, he's all over and would be the person to contact. Then he can introduce folks to the next stage of the process.
Good. Thanks for the update, Mark.
Yes.
Mark Adamson?
Well, I'm Mark Adamson. I'm a local resident as well as member of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Steering Committee, which is only coincidental and why I'm here because the last community summit, we were beginning to discuss the Comprehensive Plan Goal Six for air, water, and land quality. And one of the points from the existing comprehensive plan that came up during the presentation was the, the following. The only source of noise pollution in the Manzanita area at the present time is US Highway 101. The city encourages the Oregon Department of Transportation to maintain tree buffers along the right-of-way to reduce the noise impacts on adjacent properties. And that triggered a memory of mine that in our neighborhood, there, between Division and EPO, Ocean and North, there is, there's, we're affected by a gap in the tree buffer along US 101. And we, we suffer through, you know, excessive road noise during the day and the occasional truck with hydraulic braking at night. And I first learned of this, this gap when I moved to town a couple of years ago, but this gap was caused by the tornado. So it's right at the end of tornadoes pass, right before Highway 101. And having connected that, bringing it back to this point in the Comprehensive Plan, I was here to ask and maybe request whatever the, whatever the definition of encourages is. If we could invoke that policy somehow and maybe get some new trees planted or something with the assistance of ODOT. Anyways, I don't know. I don't know from square one how to do it. I figured that the first step was to come to council and raise it as a comment.
Good. We can follow up with their dot. And see anybody else in the audience?
Nobody else has signed up, and there is nobody on.
Nobody on. Our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda items are not discussed during the meeting. They're approved in one big motion. Any council member that may have removed an item or separated if they see something that needs to be corrected or have any comments. So with this motion, we're going to be approving, or we'll see if we're going to be approving, the approval of the minutes from our September 3rd Council Regular Session, our September 10th Council Work Session. And we're also going to be approving the bills that are included in the packet. Council, is there any comments or changes before we move forward?
No.
Catherine, Linda, Jerry, any comments, anything that needs addressing or changed? Very good. So I will now ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
That's so moved.
Okay. First, and do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Linda. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion has been passed unanimously. Thank you, council. Now, we're going to move on to the city manager report. So Leila, take your time.
Thank you very much. Just a few updates. So we had a comprehensive plan town hall meeting here a couple of weeks ago. It was really pretty well-attended. We had a full house focusing on natural resources and Goals 17 and 18, which relate to the beaches and ocean shore and dunes. So it's great feedback. There is a survey online still, so you can watch the presentation that was given. And we had subject matter experts from the Department of Land Conservation and Development that participated in that. So it's, it's a useful thing to watch if you're interested, and we would really like to get your feedback as well. So fill out the survey. The survey closes on Friday at 5:00 PM. Please do that. We will be kicking off the planning commission appointment process soon, so those applications will get posted in the next week or so to get us rolling on that process. And then finally, just want to let folks know, I know it's only October and people are already putting up Christmas lights, but our tree lighting, just to get it out there ahead of time, is December 5th. So we'll get more information out there in the cool poster and all that stuff soon. Well, yeah.
So, thank you, Leila. Council, any questions, Tom?
I do. Leila, I've had a number of questions about this year's trick-or-treating. It's all going to be as, as usually been, up and down La Nita, essentially after school, that's it.
Businesses organize that, but I'll, I'll circle in with Carolyn, but I'm pretty sure that is happening. Does anybody know?
Might be nice to get some information out so everybody knows. I can bring the kids.
Yeah, the, the businesses always do it. Yeah, sure.
Awesome. Catherine, Linda, Jerry, any comments? Anything to ask Leila about her report? Very good. So we are now going to move along to new business. So we are going to consider an amendment to our contract with Advanced Excavation. This is a change order resolution to amend the contract, and I will hand that over to Leila to give us a little more information about what she's requesting.
Thanks. Yeah. So, so yes, so this is a request to have a change order to the contract that we have with Advanced Excavation. Advance was selected through a competitive RFP process to do the Classic Street Connection project. Actually, I have a list that outlines what happened. So on July 22nd, City Council approved a resolution to authorize me to approve an agreement to hire Advance to begin the work. That contract included what we're referring to as the base bid, and that scope included Nakarney City Road Waterline, the work between La Nita and Dorcas, and then a portion of the water line along Classic Street. And so that was the base bid. So that work has already begun. I think Nakarney City Road is done, and they're starting to move over onto Classic Street here soon. And, and, and so that's, that's progressing. In, at the same time, Rick and I and the city engineer have been working with Advanced to value engineer the retaining wall scope. So after we went out to RFP, we realized kind of we were dealing with a pretty significant cost differential between what we had estimated with our engineers and then what the reality was. And so we've been working with Advance to come up with a solution, which we have, please to say. And that the RFP and the contractor set up to allow for this to be a change order so that we could come back. So it was expected, anticipated. And so that's where we are. So we now have a solution that fits within budget. And I'm going to just briefly go through sort of what changed and where we are, and then ask council to, if they have any questions. So what has changed? So the main thing that's changed is the walls now in the east. We are still trying to avoid the east, which is why we had the wall in the west. But the wall in the west is the one that's very tall, extremely expensive, and was kind of this, the sticking point. And I'll show you why that is. So the cross-section has been reduced significantly. And I'll talk a little bit about why that's important. And then the landscaping in a certain portion of the section has been removed. And the reason for that is, so this is the, one of the key sections here, which is, so the black dotted line. Thank you, Josh. I should have brought my pointer. The black dotted line represents where the new retaining wall will go. And it's a combination of two things, a repair and replacement of the existing retaining wall that is there. So the cottages are two retaining walls. One that starts at Dorcas, goes about halfway down to Jackson Way. And then there's another wall that comes up from Jackson Way and a big gap in the middle. So we figured out a way to go in there and just replace that wall, which is already failing, and then connect it. And that gives us enough right-of-way to have a six-foot walking path in that portion. And then a, there'll be a separation with a rolled curb and gutter, and I'll show you some pictures of that in a minute. And then the roadway is narrowed, was 22 feet. We're going to have it at 20 feet, which is about what it is now. And there'll be a guard rail on the west side. And included in that will be, and included in the, in the bid is sort of geotechnical analysis as we go through the road reconstruction process. So to make sure that, since we're not shoring up the west side, that we're shoring up the road, which it is not right now. And so that's why we're starting to see some degradation there. So we feel really good about that. Just to give you kind of a sense of what we're talking, I always gesticulate wildly about this, but this is, so this is what we call kind of our pinch point. This is the narrowest portion and the steepest side, and we're kind of, that wall is being driven from and to. And so this is about the amount of right-of-way, this is very technical, as you can see, that we have. So this is like existing land. What we had planned to do was kind of build out the road. It looks like there's road, that there's no road there. I think folks are familiar, you know, it's just, there's nothing there, but our right-of-way extends out there. So we were going to essentially construct that. And that was, like, every foot you added was six figures. I mean, roughly speaking, it was, it was a big deal. So to cut that out, shift slightly to the west, skinny up the roadway is how we were able to get this in budget. So what we're doing, so the cross-section looks somewhat, it looks like this. This is the section between, roughly between Dorcas and Jackson Way. So on the east side, you'll see there's the block wall that we'll be replacing.
So the east side is on the right in this.
Yes. Yeah, right. And then there'll be a six-foot path that is about, you can see it's slightly elevated above the roadway there. And so that's a rolled curb. I took some pictures that are on here, but like La Nita, that rolled curb, and then a gutter, and then pavement. And there'll be a guard rail on the west side. The section between Jackson Way and Nakarney City Road remains relatively unchanged. So we'll, we're still planning to have that two-foot landscape buffer between the path, the path sort of shows between six and eight feet. The one change, though, as we've gone through the permitting and getting this thing dialed up and ready for construction, is that the path will actually terminate at Ridge Road or somewhere around there. And the reason for that is, is if we extend the path to Nakarney City Road, it triggers a pretty big intersection improvement there. And given the current condition, there's nowhere to go once you get to Nakarney City Road. However, if you go up Ridge and you come down the road there, I can't remember the name of that road, but Mulligan, there's a sort of informal path that has been somewhat formalized. It's already there. So the, you know, arguably, you could just kind of exit out that way. And then I think it gives us an opportunity down the road is we're able to have conversations with the state park and with the counties about trying to, I mean, we're just like, we're just so close to connecting to the park. So it's, I think it'll lead us to a nicer solution at the end of the day. Yeah. So, so that's another change, too, that we'll see the intersection improvement in Nakarney, but it won't be the type of pedestrian crossing that was, would be required if we had the path go there. Check the address later. So just to give you some sense of what that separation will look like. So that's the rolled curb from La Nita. But the delineation will look a little bit more like what's on the right side. So the, there'll be a visual separation between the path and the roadway. And we're maintaining all of the traffic calming, so there'll be four speed bumps. We will have striping on the street for chero's for bikes. There'll be radar signs. Yeah, so it'll look nice. One of the things we had to do, so this just kind of shows some of the issues that they're having with the walls. There's no fabric behind that. The blocks actually just sit right on top of the ground. So these, this, this wall is basically a miniature version of what was planned for on the other side, essentially. I'm sure that's technically not exactly true, but it's roughly the same thing. So but just to give you some sense of some of the other benefits that'll come with the project is, so this will be all cleaned up. That's where the path will be where the sand is, and you can see where the sand drifts onto the roadway. So they'll, that will stop as a result. And so we'll be doing quite a bit of landscaping. Part of the solution, and I don't want to gloss over this, required pretty immediate coordination with the Classic Street Cottages HOA to get a temporary construction easement on top of the easement they already gave us to construct this wall. And they were awesome. They were super quick and responsive, sat down and worked with staff to work through all the details. And have just been really helpful with us because you were on a pretty tight schedule. So their board has agreed to this, and we're working through amendment to the easement that would allow us to start working in in the area outside of our permanent five-foot easement. So the wall will be constructed outside of that. But we'll have a 10-foot temporary easement that we're working through all right now. And just to give you some, so this is the area that we'll be connecting with a retaining wall that currently is not a retaining wall there and stuff's left. So down to the dollar. So in July, the base bid that was approved is 1.4 million and some change. Through our value engineering process, we deducted some stuff from that. We added some stuff to that. And then we value engineered the retaining wall scope. And so that additional scope is 1.4 million dollars. And the total we're estimating is just below 3 million, which is, that leaves us a little bit of room for contingency if we need it. But that gets us below budget. So I had budgeted just over 3 million for this project. So we're, this is starting to heal within myself. So we have a solid bid. And the, there's a little bit of, of room there in case we need it. Yeah, so that's what I got. Be happy to take any questions when you're.
Great work. Before we go to council, is there anyone in the room with comments? If you could come to the microphone and identify yourself.
Just with the recording mic, sorry. We'll hear about it tomorrow if you don't get to the recording.
My name is Mike Garner. I'm a homeowner here in Manzanita. I just had a quick question as to what the status or the resolution on the challenge to the bid, the protest that was lodged against the bid, what the status of that is?
Yeah, so we had a protest was filed, and we issued a denial of that. And then that was, we filed a complaint in Circuit Court. And so we're working through the process with, on that now.
Joe, you got a comment?
Very quick one. Joan Newhouse, is it a paved path or a dirt path?
Any other comments in the room? Nancy, anybody online with a hand raised?
No.
Okay, now let's go to Council. Tom, any questions? Okay, now let's go to council Tom, any questions?
I just, a couple. You know, it always amazes me looking at the soft curb and the gutter that goes along with it as far as how much water that actually uh collects and, and just, and carries away. And that area, for some reason to me, seems like we frequently have water flowing across the road. So I just, I'm, I'm assuming you've done the studies to figure out that the gutter itself is going to be adequate for the stormwater to drain.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a big part of the design process. And so the road will be completely regraded, it'll be shifted, it'll have infrastructure in there that currently doesn't exist.
No more puddle.
What do you think, what do you guys call it, lake um classic or something? I can't remember.
Is there a lake? I don't know.
It pulls up pretty bad on the corner on.
Nicknaked.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the other question uh had to do with your graphic um, as far as the lane widths were concerned.
Yeah.
You showed a couple of Camaros. And, but that road really gets a lot of truck traffic. Um, and that's another concern is the width of the road being adequate for two trucks to pass one another. Are we comfortable with that as well?
It's, it's about the width it is now.
Okay.
The plan had been to make it wider, but you find when the road is narrower. So there won't be striping in the middle of the road either. Also contributes to slowing people down. And there'll be a lot more visual um cues to slow folks down, including.
The hard.
Forest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hope speaking, that's awesome.
Yeah, there's four at least.
That's all I had, thank you. Thank you. Um, online Catherine, any comments, questions?
She's muted.
Josh, we can't hear Catherine, I don't know. Josh is working on it. He says just a moment, he's working on it. Catherine, try again.
Looks like she's still muted. Didn't mute.
This is us, this is our end. Jerry, say something.
See their icons, all look like they're muted.
I can't.
No, they're all muted.
Josh, Josh working on it.
Oh, they're pinned. So you know, me and tech, you know what? I'm not trying to be Josh.
He's a hardest job.
Yeah. Yeah, Josh, dude, it's very loud.
What's? It's not gonna work.
I'm glad it's not working, yes, we can hear somebody, we get it.
Could I unmute her? Do you want me to unmute my computer?
No. When maybe, right, I mean that.
Can I get your captions?
Maybe.
I'm too old. If I just unmute Josh and nobody speaks, can we let them speak while that create a feedback loop?
It's your speaker, maybe.
Yeah, it's a speaker. Wait, Josh. Here we go. Let's try, let me try my computer and just see. Okay, Catherine, try, Catherine, try out.
Good night, good night, good night, good night. We have to, you know, turn the microphone off for you guys when she speaks.
But she's. Not unmute and can you say something?
Jerry, Linda, can you try? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
I've got nothing to say. So we can hear Jerry and Linda, but not Catherine. Let's do. You get Catherine to type in her uh.
She could call in.
Comment as she.
What if she called in?
Catherine, I'm gonna call you. We're here.
Can you hear me over the loudspeaker there?
Yes.
Yay.
Okay, great. So I have a question, I'd like Leila just to clarify. Yeah, so we're talking about this, switching the retaining wall or the wall that's to be built. So the city will bear the responsibility of replacing and creating a new wall, retaining wall for the benefit of the road and also the homeowners there. Can you confirm and clarify who owns that wall and the responsibility for that wall going forward after construction? Thank you.
Yeah, so the HOA will own the wall and we've proposed that the maintenance is done by the owners going forward. So we're finalizing that easement right now. And uh so that's how we're proposing to do it.
We got it.
Say it again.
Good, good to go, Catherine.
Okay, so I may have missed it in between trying to listen in on this and talk to fear, who owns the wall?
The HOA will own the wall.
Okay, so they own it, they maintain it, they're responsible for it.
Yes.
And how do we deal with any potential liability that could occur if there's a problem with that wall that the city has constructed once the project is complete?
So that'll, that's all getting addressed in the um in the easement. So it'll be recorded onto the property and there's, it's building off of the existing easement, which already kind of sets who's responsible for what. And so that liability will be outlined in that as well.
Then I would assume, am I still on?
Good, good.
Okay, so from that, I would assume then liability or responsibility for any problems, would the city would be absolved if the project is complete, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then just for the record, Leila, I know you mentioned the budget and you referenced the um, you know, the ups and downs of what's changed. But could you just at a top line, go through the amount of money that's funded by the state through the grant? And then the additional amount of money that the city decided, I guess, last year now to allocate towards this project? And then where the project budget is in relation to that, and that'll be it for me, thanks.
Yeah, okay, um, so if you give me a second to pull up some exact numbers. Um, the state gave us two point seven nine million. We allocated roughly uh eight hundred or so thousand dollars between water, storm and road fund. And then we have at this point, spent about a half million on sort of the design. And I don't think we've gotten our first invoice yet on the construction side, but we're committed to that one point four uh million in the base bid.
Great, and I actually do have one more question, sorry. Well, I'm not sorry, I'm here to ask questions, so that's okay. When we were going through the proposals for the city hall and the budget and we looked at where our greatest risks lay in terms of the project itself, understand whether we'd be okay with budget or not. And at that point for that project, it was the digging and the excavation that we did initially before we started to lay any foundational down. So is there a kind of a comparable analysis you give for this project to say? Or is it, is it different in nature to say that you could be pretty confident of the costs? Or, and if not, where would those risks lie and at what point in the project will we be seeing that?
That's a great question. So it's similar for this particular project. So there's not a whole lot of risk with respect to the storm or the water line infrastructure because there's no utilities in Classic Street as it is now between Dorcas and the Carney. So that's pretty straightforward, um, pretty clear, pretty low risk. The real only risk really is the uh condition of the road base. And so we've accounted for some of that, as I mentioned. So similar to this building, the foundation tends to be the place that there's the most potential for unknowns to arrive. And the same would be true here. So as the wall, I would say the road is probably the thing that has, that carries the most risk, more so than retaining wall.
Wow, I'm shocked.
Uh, but even that, we, we've had geotechnical work done on that road. We have pretty good understanding of what's happening there. Um, but you know, once you start, as we did with this building, start ripping up the ground, you may find something different. So we've accounted for that costs.
Thank you very much, thanks Brad for figuring out a workaround for me, I'll, I'll hang up.
Sure, if there's another comment for you, Catherine, I'll call you back. Uh, Linda, any questions, comments? And you're on mute, Linda, on your end, unmute.
I've almost forgotten how to do this since we've been in person. Great. I'm just really delighted that we were able to find a solution for this and that we'll be able to have a path along Classic uh road. I think that's really important and I give kudos to the team, uh Leila in particular, for doing the groundwork that allowed us to do this. So I'm really pleased with the, with the result.
You, Linda, Jared?
Uh, no, I have no questions, just want to confirm, I guess, the um the barrier between the walkway and the roadway is just a, a guardrail, did you say?
There's a rolled curb and gutter and a height separation. So there's, the barrier is on the west side of the road. So the opposite side of the street.
And the landscape is stripped too, right?
Yeah, for about half of it. Does that answer it for you, Jerry?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, no questions from me. I just want to thank again Classic Street Cottages Board for being so amenable and and agree and the rest of the homeowners, but everybody that's involved in those easements. So now I would like to ask for a motion by reading title only to approve this change order resolution to the contract with advanced excavation.
I would make a motion to approve a resolution of the city council of the city of Manzanita, Oregon, authorizing the city manager to execute a change order to the city's contract with the Advanced Ex- Excavation Incorporated.
Thank you, Tom, do we have a second to that motion?
A second.
So we have a second, all in favor to pass this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, do we have any opposed? It looked like everybody raised their hand. So this motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks for working.
Yeah, thanks and thanks for Rick's here tonight, everybody. You're thinking me, but he did a lot of free lifting, so well done, Sarah.
So our next order of new business is to amend ordinance zero five dash zero two, creating an exception for off-leash areas, which is basically behind city hall. Um, and if I'm correct, Leila, this is the second reading of this ordinance. Um, and I know a slight amendment was made from the last time to make sure we lined up the penalties. So everybody needs to be aware, if you don't pick your dog's poop up, you could be fined five hundred bucks. So pick the poop up.
We're just gonna sit out here and.
Watch. Um, I think, I think that's pretty clear, I don't think we need any more explanation on that. Do we have any public comments in the room regarding this ordinance amendment? No, Nancy, anybody online?
No.
Nobody online. So we would now ask for a motion to approve this.
I've got a question first.
Sure, I'm sorry, I didn't ask council. Council, now that we have no public comments, any questions?
I do, uh, I'm channeling Mary Brophy and want to know, do we have a plan to put up a poop bag station?
We have two. They're already there.
They're already there, all right.
Uh, any of our counselors online have any questions, comments? No, Catherine, uh, Jerry? No? Okay, now we're going to ask for, well, let me ask a question first. This is the second reading.
Yes.
So if we move forward and approve this amendment, it will then go into effect thirty days from today, is that correct? Okay. So now I'm going to ask for a motion to approve this amendment by reading the title only. Do we have a motion to approve it?
I would make a motion to approve an ordinance of the city of Manzanita, Oregon, amending ordinance zero five dash zero two to allow off-leash areas for dogs in specific areas designated by the city.
Thank you, Tom, do I have a second? Catherine seconds that motion, all in favor, please raise hands or say aye. Aye, we got everybody there, so there's no opposed. So this motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Now we're going to move on to our last item in new business, which is the Emergency Volunteer Corps of Nalen Bay. And Velda Handler is here to talk to us about the Great Shakeout. So Velda, please have a seat and give us an update.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, the slideshow, is it ready?
Oh. Little sidetracked with the uh internet being down, Velda.
Velda Handler. So the Emergency Volunteer Corps from seventeen years on our end and the Medical Reserve Corps Coordinator for the county, as well as the Shelter Division Lead for EVC. So we are here to talk about the Great Shakeout, uh, which we're very much a part of. And Emergency Volunteer Corps is a non, uh, or a total volunteer organization, one of nine, comprised the Tillamook, the TC four group, which is the Tillamook County Citizens Corps Council. So we work countywide. So as soon as I get my slideshow, we'll be. Okay, thank you so much for this opportunity. So um, the Great Shakeout is a worldwide, nationwide, statewide, countywide event that happens every year and the goals are awareness and practice. So the TC, oh, I'm sorry.
I, I'm sorry, my hand went over.
Okay, so again, TC four is a coalition of communities countywide uh with a vision of preparedness and resilient communities across the county. So Emergency Volunteer Corps has been in existence longer than most of the community organizations. And so we are really a role model for them and, and it's wonderful to see it spread throughout the county. Next. So these are the groups right now, uh, Bay City, Kate Mir's, Emergency Volunteer Corps, Garibaldi, Leodona, Oceanside, Rockaway, South Tillamook uh County. So the annual day is October sixteenth at ten sixteen this year. Last year it was October seventeen at ten seventeen, et cetera. And so that's just the way it goes. It's the fourth or the third Thursday of each uh October. So people worldwide participate in the drills at work, school or home. In Japan, they have these drills with their little kids, like we have fire drills forever. So it's just part of their culture. And just a photo. Just a page. Participation. So again, community engagement, encouraging communities to come together and foster a sense of shared responsibility. When people come together and have a common goal, that makes them stronger. And also raising awareness about earthquake risk and educating participants about earthquake and tsunami safety and knowing what to do with muscle memory. Because if you've done it, you've done it, you've done it, and practiced in the events for a real event, you know what to do automatically. This is our flyer. Thank you, Brad. He has created our countywide flyer, which we're using. That QR code goes to the Tillamook County Emergency Management Site. And then each one of those nine organizations has our web information on it. So you can find out what's going on in your area. And this is FEMA's drop cover, hold on, that's the earthquake part. We have added the tsunami part because we're on the coast. Okay, again, emphasizing preparation and practice. Focus the drop cover, hold on, to protect yourself from falling or flying objects. And just to say something about that, keep heavy things off of top shelves. And so, uh, put baskets or whatever. Understand the need to evacuate quickly to your assembly area or your safe place. And we're all familiar with personal preparedness, go bags, having shelter, food, water, have your, your medications rotated, having some type of communication like our neighborhood radios, and then a reunification plan with family and cash, because we won't be able to use, um, electronics for a while. And this again is go bag, which we're all very, very aware of here in this end of the county. These are our new neighborhood radios, so they've gone from the yellow radio to now the green radio. But they're called neighborhood radios. TC four has added the component of evacuation again, because we live on the coast. Everyone is likely to be impacted. So a lot of people say, I'm not in the inundation zone, I don't need to worry. However, those in the flood zone, that are above the flood zone may have their homes impacted, may not be able to get into their homes. They may not be safe to reenter, and they also may be leaving to camp at home, like in their vehicles and their yards and their field, wherever, in a tent. We're all familiar with the tsunami assembly areas, and so it's real important to know wherever you are. If you're at Fred Meyer, if you are home, wherever you are, where do I go if something happens? And also a good reminder to go to that assembly area is the items that will be there are what you have with you. So your go bags, your radios, those kinds of things. These were the outcomes from the previous Tillamook County exercises. This will be the third year. And so, uh, in communication, they heard, there has been distribution of solar communication goal boxes countywide and development of active, ongoing communications training, and that's all been led by John Beeston, Emergency Volunteer Corps, and he is the auxiliary communications coordinator for the county. And also community awareness that normal responders will not be available, because a lot of people say, I just called the fire. They're busy, they can't get to us. They're taking care of their own families themselves, and they have different priorities. So we have to really take care of ourselves. And I, two, uh, twenty twenty-three, we had four hundred and fifty-five participants countywide. Last year we had seven hundred and forty-one, and so our goal is higher this year. Again, another photo, a video or a, a picture. Uh, our goal is to support the, uh, provide the importance of the Great Shakeout Awareness and exercise by regional city and county leaders, raise awareness for personal preparedness, increase community participation, and increase business community engagement. We worked really hard with especially Tillamook, the city of Tillamook, because they have been, their go-to is, we have the hospital, we're not worried. Hospital's going to be inundated with, uh, they'll be busy with themselves evacuating. So we're getting them more excited. Participating in Great Shakeout drills enhances preparedness, ensures a knowledge of what to do, instills confidence, and empowers individuals to be more resilient and prepared. Who, what, where, why, when? This is on the back now of our flyers. Because FEMA said that people do not like to be scared, they want to know what to do. And so every flyer you see, this will be on the back. The local assembly areas for our community, we have five. So the Manzanita City Hall, right here for the Manzanita area, Nahalem Bay Fire for the Bayside Gardens area. In reality, it's the, uh, baseball field across the street, but we don't want to cross the highway. City of Nahalem is the park, city of Wheeler is the upper park, and then Nahalem Valley will be out, uh, where Karen Sarnaker lives. Any questions?
So any questions or comments, Tom?
Well, talking about the scare factor, Velda. So, uh, I mean, I remember when I was a kid, tornado drills were always like cool, because you could get out of class for a little while and go sit in the hall with all the other kids. But how old do you think we should start talking to the kids about it? Do you recommend it for preschoolers? I've got a three-year-old in the house.
He, I don't, I'm not a, I don't know. Thing is, the thing is, they go with you. If they would go with you for a fire drill, they would go with you for whatever. So you're a role model.
Yeah, okay.
Not frightening them, just this is what we do.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. and any comments, questions? Linda? Well, good, Jerry?
Alda, thank you so much. Always good.
Great job, Velda.
Guy that came with you, he's always pretty good too.
So we're going to move on to the last item on our agenda, and those are council updates. This is when the council talks about things they've been involved in and ongoing projects that they want to let the community, uh, have an update on. So Tom, do you have any updates?
Well, honestly, uh, just a couple of things. First off, I just want to let everybody know that, uh, I did, uh, attend the Community Summit um, and found it to be really interesting. Um, it was very well attended. Uh, I was surprised to see how much comment we got about topics when it first got introduced. I thought there can't be a lot to be said about this. But it, it looks like the Dune Management questions are going to get a lot of heat and a lot of conversation. And I'm interested to see how that resolves itself. And then a couple of things, everybody rolls their eyes a little bit when I start talking about the Historical Society, but there's some of this that I just have to share. Number one is, you know, and this isn't just a Historical Society note, this is a city note. Within the past month, we lost one of our, uh, longtime citizens and great, uh, contributors to this community, Owen Nicholson. And Owen was on the Planning Commission, he was on City Council. He served the Historical Society in such a fabulous way by, uh, finding grant money to complete the basement at the, uh, Pine Grove and get the Historical Society moved in there. Owen was a, a great contributor to this community. He'll be remembered by me. He, he died just short of his hundred and first birthday. And I saw all of his sons at the Mudnick Golf Tournament, uh, get together this year. And if you knew Owen at all, you remembered him for that huge smile of his. Um, and if you ever went to the golf course with him, he was a dead-eye putter, and he had a putter that he swung from in between his legs, and it made the most incredible ping that you ever listened to. And when I asked the guys, who gets the putter? Well, one of his daughter-in-laws is getting it, uh, and she put dibs on it probably fifteen years ago. So, uh, Owen was, was, was a monumental figure in our community, and we're all going to miss. The other little Historical Society note that I have is today, I went to the bank and Dave Bell used to be a, a member of the Historical Society and was a great contributor. He was a, uh, Wheeler City Councilman for a number of years. And one of his notable things about his lifetime was his operation of the Captain Bell, which was a recreational vessel that was a steam tug that he operated on the, on the bay for a period of time. And, um, when he passed, um, none of his children had any interest in trying to operate a steam tug. And his widow, uh, donated it to Historical Society. We thought maybe we could operate it, but none of us, steam is a really tricky thing. And if you don't do it right, it'll blow the whole thing up. So, um, we decided it was time to sell it, and we did, uh, this weekend, we finally got it sold. And the decision has been that we're going to start a scholarship fund that will run through the high school at Tillamook Bay Community College for graduates or students at the high school that are interested in mechanical engineering. So that's how we're going to fund that. And that's just a feel-good moment for me. It's going to be a benefit to the community, and that is my report.
Thank you.
Thanks for your update.
Catherine, do I need to give you a call? Any comments, any updates you want to give? No?
Okay.
Linda, how about you?
I'm going to pass this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jerry, how about your updates?
Sure. So, uh, Brad and I and Leila all attended the League of Oregon Cities' one-hundredth Annual Meeting, which was in Portland last week. And, um, there were about a hundred and sixty cities, uh, represented. Quite a few of the ones from, uh, our area, in fact, were there. Um, so I got to meet and re-meet some of those folks. Brad and I kind of split up. There were a couple of, uh, sessions we overlapped on, but I guess between the two of us, we probably sat in on uh, eight or nine sessions. And, um, the biggest takeaway, I think, in general terms is that, um, you know, you go to these things and it gives you a chance to sort of gauge how you're doing as a city councilor, as a city government against, um, others out there. And I think we came away feeling pretty good. Uh, but we also learned a few things, and, uh, I'm going to follow up with a memo, uh, to council, not going into a lot of depth necessarily, but just highlighting a few of the things that, that, uh, I picked up. And I'll work with Brad to make sure we cover anything he, um, saw as well. Uh, Leila, of course, attended, uh, sessions in general, different than the ones aimed at, uh, counselors, or, uh, there was a good mix of staff and, uh, electeds at the conference. Uh, we even talked to a couple of vendors that might be able to help us out, um, and so we'll follow up with them, uh, in the weeks to come. So it was a, uh, it was a good, uh, event, um, reassuring, because we rely on LOC a lot i- individually and as a, uh, as a body and as a city government. And it was good to see them in action. They put on a, um, a pretty impressive show. Uh, other than that, uh, the, uh, I did attend the, um, community forum, uh, which I agree with, uh, comments by, um, Tom and Leila earlier in the meeting was a, a, a good, uh, opportunity for the community to come out and be heard. It was a little, you know, comparing it to the housing, uh, forum, uh, several months back, it would, it was a little different, because we had that one hot button issue, the Dune grading issue that kind of sparked some, uh, back and forth, uh, which is a little, it, it, we know the issues out there, we know we're, we're going to be dealing with it. Uh, the forum was, um, an appropriate place to talk about it, but it was a little surprise that it kind of, uh, moved to the, uh, red alert level that it did, uh, that evening. But, you know, everybody got through it, uh, so it was good. Uh, and then finally, I think, um, I saw most of us at the opening of the, um, Health Center, uh, the other day. Uh, it was a great community event, as was our City Hall, uh, event a couple of months before. And just a reminder that, uh, people in these, uh, several communities that are clustered together here, uh, really share a lot of the same, uh, concerns and, and, uh, desires for the broader community. And, uh, it was really, really heartening to see, uh, that turnout. So that's my report. I saw, I saw the mayor grimace when I was talking about the community forum. I should give her a chance to rebut. Okay.
Yeah. In there.
It was known for my lack of, um, poker face. I, I made the face because I actually thought, um, that portion of the session was fantastic. And, um, I expect people to show up and have strong feelings about things. What I, and so that was great as far as I was concerned. I wasn't sure kind of if somebody had been there, what they might have thought about red hot buttons, or however you said that, Jerry. So that's where the facial expression came from. But, um, what I loved in that session was we clearly had groups who had very different perspectives and for different reasons that you could understand. And people listened to each other, which, uh, is the best. So we will have a lot more discussion on a lot more issues, um, in addition to the Dune grading. But I, I thought it was a good, really good moment for people to show up with a strong point of view and also listen, even when it was something fairly contrary to what you felt pretty strongly about, which I think was the case in a couple of, a couple of folks there. So I was actually really pleased about that, that evening. So. Thank you. I, uh, wasn't intending anything, just, I was just being myself. There you go, the facial expressions. That's, it's probably not going to get any better than that going forward. So there we are. So thank you very much. That's it.
Thanks.
And the opening at the Health Center was just utterly fantastic. Hundreds of people there was wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks, Martha. And so I'll finish up with my updates. Um, something a little new we've been working on is the last, uh, believe, workshop, I agreed to head up the liaison for the city's emergency management process. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the Nahalem Bay Emergency Preparedness Collaborative. This is something EVC and B is heading up, and it's basically an initiative to have the tri-village area, North County, replicate what Cannon Beach has. Uh, many of the city officials in the tri-villages, as well as EVC and B leadership, went and toured one of the sites in Cannon Beach. They actually have caches located there for sites throughout the city with the ability to sustain eight hundred to a thousand people for a week. Um, after we saw that, you can imagine we all went, hmm, I think that's something we need to do. So in this collaborative effort, we have involved the cities of Wheeler, Nahalem, Manzanita, Rockaway Beach, we've also involved in Nahalem Bay Fire District. Uh, the Tillamook County Emergency Manager and Commissioner Bell are involved. Uh, we're very happy that the State of Oregon Office of Resilience and Emergency Management, also known as ORAM, has become involved as well. That's somebody we're really looking to with assistance, not only from, uh, validating our potential cash flights, locations for safety, but fingers crossed to get some funding from them. Manzanita specific, this last week, we had our first meeting with the EVC and B. That included our Manzanita Emergency Manager, Sergeant Sims, Leila, myself, Trish Johnson, the president of the EVC and B, and Linda Kozlowski. Uh, we went over some of the goals. We talked about GIS mapping, which is basically taking data and putting on a map that you can visually see. Uh, like I said before, we're going to send that off to ORAM and Dogami to review those sites for suitability. The cities are making the decisions here. That's very important to keep in mind. The EVC and B is supporting us with their expertise, their inventory recommendations, research, and helping find sources of revenue to make this happen, i.e. grants. Uh, we're at the very start of the project. Uh, within this, as you can imagine, Manzanita really needs to consider all of this within their strategic planning, which one of our goals is emergency management preparedness. Uh, we're also going through an asset inventory process. So we need to get a list of our assets, determine what there are, and then make decisions from the council perspective as to what to use those for. Uh, I feel like we've got a really. Uh, I feel like we've got a really good start. Process has kicked off. And there'll be more to come in the next year as work continues. And lastly, my regular updates on communications with the city. This month for our FAQ page, we had two hundred and eighty-one visits. Our specific questions to council had forty-two downloads. Some of the topics that we communicated with the public about. Uh, we had someone come in with questions about parking citation. Of course, we put that over to the courts. As you mentioned in the public forum, we had several, three emails in regards to Dune grading. Uh, we had a message about neighborhood caches. I think we know that's a familiar topic. Uh, Jenna spoke on tonight. Uh, we did have someone that was looking to pass council meetings and could not find our archives. So when you go to that meeting and you see all the agendas and the videos are recorded, you'll see buttons and links for archives. So as it starts to fill up on the main page, it does dump over to the archives. So all of that stuff's there. It doesn't go away. We just move it out of those main pages. We did have uh, some questions with someone looking to start up a business.
I'm not sure what happened. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. And we're recording right now, so be careful.
I thought we could make a deal or something. Just kidding. I'm sorry. So where did they go?
Yeah.